Hi, I'm JD and welcome to another episode of Seen and Heard. Today's gonna be a little bit of a different episode. We have one of our former Select Board members who is running again. His name is Gardner and we're gonna talk about just accessibility in the town of Danvers. And kind of learn about, you know, Gardner a little bit and learn about just the Select Board and what they do and how it all ties together. So, uh, welcome Gardner.
Well, thank you for having me here. I appreciate the opportunity.
Oh yeah, it's great to have you. So let's, let's kind of start right off like and just talk about the town a little bit. How, how long have you lived in Danvers?
Well, I was fortunate enough to be born and raised in Danvers and I've raised my, along with my wife, we've raised our three now adult children in town.
Oh, nice. So your family's been part of Danvers for a while?
Oh yes, many, many generations. Uh, we date back even before Davis was Davis when it was Salem Village.
Oh wow.
Uh, yeah, now some of my, uh, some of my relatives were accused in the Witches area.
Oh wow.
And other relatives, uh, marched, uh, to, uh, into Lexington and Concord, uh, for the Revolutionary War. We have a, a long and steeped history of, uh, as being part of Danvers.
Yeah, I mean, it's Gardner Trask, right? So I mean, Trask is, if you're from around here, I feel like it's a, a street name you've seen. Cause we've got at least a couple, I feel there's, we got three. There's a Trask Lane, I know that at least.
Trask Road and Trask Street.
Okay, you got one of each. Alright, nice, nice. How about you tell us kind of like what a Select Board member is and what they do in the town?
Uh, so I was, uh, fortunate enough to serve for 18 years on the Select Board. The Select Board are, um, very much like the, uh, governing body. They set the, uh, tone of what they want the town to do. Um, you might think of it in a corporation as the, uh, Board of Directors. Uh, general principle, general direction on the way things go. Um, a lot of the hard work and a lot of the real decisions are made, uh, at the town administration level with say the Planning Board or the ZBA or the Accessibility Commission. But others, actually the, the true control lies with the town meeting members. Who have to vote on and affirm the budget, the direction the town goes in based on, on the, on the general principles that the selectmen set.
So what would be the best way for someone, you know, from the town to get involved?
Oh, I always recommend that they start, uh, attending meetings. Depends on your level of interest and how much you want to give, uh, give back, how much time you can afford. Um, but becoming a town meeting member, as I said, is the, one of the most powerful positions in town. You get to see the budget, you get to see where every dollar goes, you get to weigh in on those. And recommend changes if you feel there should be changes to various budgets. If you want to spend more on police or change some budget line item for a warrant article. The town meeting member, 149 elected representative officials or neighbors, your neighbors. Make those decisions on your behalf. That's the most powerful. Um, there's generally one or two town meetings a year. Um, they're usually a couple of hours and obviously this prep work ahead of that. To hear the budget, to hear the warrant articles, to hear the zoning changes and however much time you want to spend doing that, uh, is up to you. The other way to get involved is if you have a particular interest, you might have an interest in conservation. Or in accessibility issues or the schools, uh, you could become a member of a PAC or the, uh, the Conservation Commission or some of the other boards. This town runs on volunteers. So, uh, I encourage people, the town manager has a volunteer form. Anybody can fill out and say, these are my interests. And if a board position or commission or committee position opens up. We contact those people or the town manager contacts those people to see how their interests, if that aligns with their interests.
That's great. So to be a town meeting member, you do have to be elected though?
You are. Uh, so Danvers is divided into eight precincts. Uh, it's based on population and sometimes those lines move if, uh, every 10 years when the census happens. Uh, and you have to be elected to become a town meeting member, you get a signature, you get a ballot, uh, a, um, uh. You have to get 10 signatures to get on the ballot.
Oh yeah.
And then you, uh, hopefully get elected by your precinct as your representative at the annual town elections.
Okay. And so that's the annual, so once a year those elections happen?
They happen once a year, but when you get elected, it's generally for a three-year term. So it's a cyclical thing, just like on the Select Board. Uh, when you hot, when you elect a Select Board member, that's for a three-year term and it's two, two and one.
Okay, gotcha.
Goes around.
So I, I wanna ask kind of like what your tenure was like previously as far as accessibility. But first I wanna ask you kind of what, what does accessibility kind of mean to you?
Um, accessibility, uh, i- is not just, uh, when, when, when people think of accessibility issues, uh, or disability, you know, disability issues. They often have a picture in their minds eye of someone with mobility issues or hearing, um, or visual impairments. Um, I, when I was living in town, uh, for a time, I lived on Amherst Street and I was a caregiver for, uh, Dr. Fred Fay. Uh, and, uh, he was a quadriplegic. And my, uh, responsibility was to be at the house, uh, to support him with his needs, uh, less medical, uh, and personal needs, but. Keep the house up and heat the yard up, but we formed a great friendship and, uh. I, I think that we need to do a better job broadening the idea that accessibility isn't just mobility, isn't just visual or hearing. You've got cognitive, you've got sensory, you've got, uh, communication, uh, issues, disabilities that you, that should come to the forefront when you think of those things. And not just our curb cuts enough.
Oh, I agree a hundred percent. I mean, there's a lot of invisible disabilities too that just people don't see. You know, we all mask, uh, mask ourselves to some degree to hide pain or something that might be bothering us or making us other than the people around us. And, you know, that doesn't really need to happen, you know? People can feel more comfortable in their own skin, being out in a town that offers just accessibility in the form of acceptance. So, I mean, you talk about being a caregiver and I feel like that's a really unique perspective. Like a really unique relationship that I feel like people kind of take for granted. But I think inevitably you become a caregiver at some point in your life. Whether it's for a loved one, like your parents or a spouse or a sibling or something like that. But it kind of takes having that experience to open your eyes a little more. So I, I appreciate that you have that unique perspective and are able to bring it. Um, as far as your previous tenure on the Select Board, what's kind of, if we can go back in time almost. What was in your head at that time as far as accessibility? Was it just, okay, curb cuts? You know, like kind of what have you learned throughout your time with the Select Board as far as like what accessibility means in the town?
Sure. Um, so being on the Select Board, as I said earlier, we're kind of the Board of Directors. And a lot of the hard work gets done by the Planning Board, the ZBA and others. And of course, the selectmen would always encourage any, uh, the Planning Board to make sure they were ADA compliant for, for, and comply to state and federal laws. Uh, relating to accessibility and, and while I was on the board, uh, one of my, uh, favorite roles was I was the chairman of the Davis Affordable Housing Trust. Um, where, and the way that comes into play is we would talk about and we were advocates for and partners with. The New England, uh, School for the Deaf. And, and the, I'm sorry, the Home for the Deaf, excuse me. And we helped advocate and drive through the creation of 140 units that will soon to be built there. That focus on ageism, uh, it's, it will be, uh, dedicated prioritized for over 55 with, uh, uh, hearing. Um, deaf, near deaf and, or blind and deaf, uh, residents will be there, will get first priority. Second to that would be, uh, veterans and Davis residents. So with an eye towards the, a very unique need. And when a part, part of that process, I learned just how, um, limited the housing opportunities were for renters. To not only get to an apartment that has the sufficient width doors or the handles, you know, the, the grab handles. Or the lower cabinets, but also in this case, visual impairment, uh, communication impairment. The ability to easily and commonly speak to people, uh, is also, was also part of that education process.
I mean, it's tough, you know, because like you said before with your family history, we live in a very historic area. But it's hard to be accessible without change and growth in some form. So it's like, you know, we want to preserve the, the quaintness, the small bits of our town and, and kind of like the, the lovely historical aspects. But at the same time, we do need to grow, we need to change some things so that it can be more accessible, you know, like. Our sidewalks aren't necessarily flat. I mean, I understand as someone in a chair, I drive, I drive this with my head. So if the road's kind of slanted, I'm like, you know, kind of leaning, trying to hit that turn. And I understand that, you know, the roads have to have a certain slant to them so that there's drainage and, and there's certain logistics. But, you know, there's definitely areas where I feel like if we could funnel some money there. We could upgrade, you know, some of our sidewalks and stuff like that. It's tough, you know, though, because we live in New England, it's, it's historical, but also we have the weather and stuff that can tear up, cause frost heaves. It's just kind of a interesting paradox that we exist in a little bit here with wanting to preserve like this, the history of our town. But also meet the needs of new people moving into town that need accessibility help.
I think the history of our town is also built around, uh, the immigrant, immigration of people who aren't from this area. You know, we are old New England, yes, I absolutely agree, but there's no reason we can't integrate accommodations to make everybody feel comfortable. Whether it could be a small issue such as, you know, park benches that accommodate the fact that a wheelchair is, is part of that. Or a picnic table or a playground that has, uh, some equipment that, that encourages and embraces people with a different, uh, various, uh, disabilities.
I mean, I love that. I mean, it's, it really is important to start with the small things, I feel like, but the things that are also visual. So like people at a park, they'll see that, they'll see the, the cut in the bench so that a wheelchair can pull right into that table. And, and it, and it sparks that thought in your mind, you know, it maybe makes a child ask that question, why is that like that? And then it gives, you know, a teachable moment for the parent to kind of educate them about accessibility. Or at least the fact that there are some people that require different accommodations to be able to enjoy these things. You know, and we, we do have a beautiful town and we have this kind of beautiful, um, you know, sort of central downtown area that is very walkable. And I think in, it is accessible for the most part. There's obviously some things that can be changed there to just kind of upgrade it and make it a little more polished in that way. But, you know, it's got a lot of character and I feel like there's a lot of opportunities for us to kind of. Pull attention to the downtown area. I mean, I worked on a grant where we were trying to get, um, the, I think it was called the Downtown Rejuvenation Fund or Downtown, something like that. Just to draw in some money to kind of like make it more accessible, add accessible pedestrian signals and stuff like that. Because as kind of cool as our, as our downtown is, it's not, um, the most modern, as, as I'm sure you know. And there are some new buildings we're putting in there. Um, and there's, you know, people in the town that have kind of like thoughts on both sides of that. I, I mean, I think we need to grow. I think it's important that our town grows and evolves in a way that kind of accommodates everybody. I know there's certain buildings that we don't want to see go and certain businesses we don't necessarily want to see change. But ultimately everything changes to some degree, you know? So I think what I'm trying to get at is what's, what are some more opportunities you see just kind of in the current landscape? As far as crossover between, you know, the Select Board and the Accessibility Commission and the accessibility of the town? Like where's some kind of meeting points we could come together on?
Sure. Well, I think you're right. There, there are opportunities for even incremental changes. Uh, longer crosswalks at certain locations for those with mobility issues or the elderly who just need more than the 20 seconds. At the stoplight at the, the street crossing. And there are bigger systemic issues. Um, we are suffering from a housing, uh, shortage. That's not just Danvers, that's across the street and primarily across the country. Uh, people, this is a desirable community. People want to live here.
Oh yeah.
Um, and the, and we also want people to be able to stay. I want my children to be able to buy a house in Danvers. I want my grandchildren to be able to buy a house in Danvers. And it boils down to supply and demand often. And with some of these developments, and it should be reasonable development, there should be measured and reasonable development. But with that, that opens the opportunity for, uh, uh, someone who might have outgrown their home. They raised their children in Danvers, now they have a four-bedroom home. There may be just a couple left or the, the single person left. They want to stay in their community, they want to live here. So as, as they, uh, start to appreciate some of the disabilities that come along with age. Um, they might want to downsize and if there's no place to do it, we don't want them to be driven out of town. We want to have those opportunities. Um, today's building standards call for, uh, a lot of the, uh, ADA requirements to be met. Uh, wider door frames and, and, and other accommodations, uh, every building has to have an elevator and, uh, over two, two stories. And yes, it is difficult to retrofit some of our historic buildings.
Sure.
Especially those who are, you know, a building built in 1730. It's gonna be hard to, to put a, uh, to make that necessarily handicap accessible.
Oh, absolutely.
Um, but where we are moving and progressing and evolving, we should take that opportunity to, to, to make that better.
So kind of going forward and, and off of that, like, how can we support some of those people as far as? I know we talked about the, the living situations, but maybe as far as, um, emergency services or, you know, snow removal, for example. Certain things that are more, not necessarily in their living space, but more in the town itself?
Sure. Well, you did ask about, uh, about the, uh, fire and police, uh, in, in our earlier discussions. And, and where we need to embrace the fact that we are a, a culture with many differences. Is that the Davis Police Department, the Fire Department, the School Department all take specialized training. To, uh, assess and understand and react appropriately to those people who may have disabilities. Uh, they may, it may be a communication disability, it may be a verbal issue or cognitive issue. Maybe, uh, you know, you can't rely on if a firefighter yells out, is anybody in here? Someone hearing that call. So they take specialized training and I would encourage and continue to encourage and broaden that. Um, you know, I, I think there's, there's, there's opportunities to, um, think about and, and embrace, uh, uh, with. With people who have those unique perspectives, volunteering and offering their time. Embrace opportunities that perhaps I as an able-bodied person don't see. You live a different life than I do. You see things in ways that I don't. Um, and it's, it's not for lack of trying to understand, it's just for lack of experience. And so, um, I think we need to embrace more those people. I think, uh, those people who can bring that unique perspective, those, uh, wonderful solutions that we may not see. Um, to the fore, when they're talking about whether we're planning, uh, a new zoning change or whether we're planning a, um, an event for the town. It could even be as simple as an event for the town. Where do you hold it? Well, if you hold it at this location, it's more difficult for people. If you hold it another, it's easier. Um, and so, uh, I think that we need to broaden our view. And ask people with those unique perspectives to help us learn and understand better.
I think part of the problem though is just the, the call to action aspect is getting that in front of people. You know, it's like with the amount of information we're given these days with, you know, internet and social media and everything. I feel like a lot of our local stuff gets a little buried. So, I mean, I wonder if there's a good way for us to kind of. Almost have like a central point of contact. I know we have our town website. I know we've got our calendars, but I feel like there could be some better way to just. Get this information in front of people so that they can feel like they can be more involved in town stuff. I don't know if you have any thoughts?
Yeah, I think our world has changed dramatically. Uh, we no longer have a daily newspaper that's the Danvers Herald. We no longer, which a lot of people rely on. Um, we have the Salem News, uh, to the extent that they can cover all the communities they cover, they do. Um, but you're right. And I think that we have looked at the town website as, oh, here's a mechanism for communication. But there are, um, a number of people in our population that don't use that.
Right.
For various reasons. Um, uh, one of the things I, I, I'm going to suggest is I actually, uh, uh, looked at in preparation of our discussion. Um, I went and looked at the, uh, and I'm in a, I'm the software, I'm in the software industry.
Okay.
So we often know to, uh, pass our, uh, um, our UIs, our user interfaces, uh, and look for accessibility, uh, issues. Well, there are online services you can use. It's one's called Wave. And I, I pushed the, uh, town's website against them and some of the scores were actually not very good. And we should think about those things as we're creating those. Um, there are opportunities in town, uh, one of the ones I wanted to recommend based on some of your questions is. Um, many of the boards and commissions, uh, that are volunteers in the town have a Select Board liaison. I was the, on the Affordable Housing Trust, I was on the River Committee and many others. But it is unfortunate that I've learned that the Accessibility Commission doesn't have a Select Board liaison. And when I get back in office, I am actually going to, uh, petition to make a Select Board liaison, be part of that commission. And I'm gonna volunteer and ask that I be the first one.
That'd be great. I mean, I often feel like, you know, we're floundering to some degree when we're meeting in our, in, you know, our monthly meetings. And it's like, we, we can have great ideas, but then you can only take an idea so far sometimes before you run into some red tape, for example. And I think sometimes you can feel that disconnect from our commission and the government itself. So something like that would be invaluable to us because we would feel less untethered like we do right now. So, I mean, we, we can organize stuff, but it's more about advocacy right now. And obviously that's all it ever is gonna be to some degree. Um, but at least with a liaison, we'll have like that direct kind of line of communication to the town. So that, you know, it's not an echo chamber necessarily. And whatever we're proposing actually gets in front of the board without us. You know, having to get an elected person onto the town meetings or have to get into a Select Board meeting where. You know, I'm sure there's a long line of people that have all kinds of things they want to talk about at that. Um, as far as the liaison itself, what kind of, what kind of duties would a liaison carry?
I think it's, it's a two-way communication duty. It's the ability to, as you said, cut through the red tape. You, you don't want any board or commission or volunteer group to feel like they're an island and have to then go, uh, and ask for something from the government. It should be a partnership where the liaison works with the, the board, with the commission. I'll say, I'll use the Affordable, uh, the Accessibility Commission as our example. So sitting in that room, uh, a liaison not only brings the knowledge of the town and its processes and, and, and help you cut through the red tape. Uh, you want to have an event, you want to propose, uh, zoning change. You want to, you know, make a, make a suggestion about some way of improving the town to embrace everybody. They can help with the understanding of the process. Now, they may not know everything about it. I, I, I'll be the first to admit, I don't know every aspect of town government. I mean, I know where to go. And, and so I would bring that to the table. And then from the, being a part of the commission, I'd be able to bring back some insight, uh, to the rest of the board and to other boards and commissioners on. And say, hey, you know what? Have you thought about this? And help them make a more informed decision based on better, uh, input and data points.
I mean, I think that's important. Communication is like hyper key to everything we do as far as advocacy and getting any of these things done. It's, and I think that's, that's where we've struggled without the liaison is having that point of communication. And it's not just that, it's like as a Select Board member, you have us, you have all these other commissions. You might see that spider web and how we might connect to another commission and be able to work together on something. So we're not working on redundant things alongside each other with no idea, you know?
Another good example is if, let's, I'm on the board, I'm liaison next year. And I'm back on the Affordable Housing Committee. A developer comes to us and proposes, uh, uh, some development. And by zoning bylaws, certain aspects of that have to be set aside for affordability. But the Affordable Housing Committee has the ability to, um, negotiate. And maybe it's not just an affordable unit, but an affordable unit that's built for a, someone with a disability. Build that, you know, build and, uh, advertise that unit. As one where you might be on the first floor, you might be right, right near the elevator. The cabinets are automatically built lower, the grab buys are already built into the bathroom. And having that knowledge and being able to connect those dots between different organizations within the town, I think would be invaluable. We have to do a better job of celebrating the, uh, Accessibility Commission and what it's done. Um, I, you know, a newsletter article isn't necessarily, uh, something that, that gets read by the, the population. Um, and like I said, most people have a picture in their head of what someone with a disability is, we need to broaden that. We have to, to, to make sure people, uh, understand that while one in five people have a disability, a diagnosed disability. Eighty percent of the population is, is going to be, will experience a disabling experience in their life. It may, and, um, so it may be themselves, it may be a family member that they have to care for. Someone with declining mobility issues, it may be. And again, a lot of people think of, when you say someone with a disability, you think of a permanent disability. But often it's a temporary disability. It could be someone recovering from surgery. It could be someone who with, you know, uh, evolving disabilities that come along with age. It could be onset of dementia, it could be, um, which itself brings other disability, uh, issues such as communication skills and verbal. We need to do a, a, a better job of advocating and educating so that people don't look at it with a certain small focus. But broaden that focus. Broadening the high school service hours, for example, would be one way of doing it. And I'm not suggesting that they're lacking in what they do now. But, um, we should take particular, pay particular attention to, um, pairing, uh, and embracing people with disabilities. In that part of the service program. Um, it may be the part of the best buddies program. Um, where we expand that so that a, uh, high school senior, junior or senior who has to get in service hours as part of their graduation requirement. Meets and works with a best buddy. It may be as simple as expanding the, uh, council and aging maintains a snow removal list. Well, let's partner up with that and have the student athletes going and doing, uh, that work for the person who's aged in place. Has outgrown their large home and doesn't have the ability or mobility to get out and shovel their sidewalks. We can broaden some of existing programs to do that. Um, we can embrace and expand, uh, the communication boards that they're putting in some of the, uh, elementary schools. That help the, um, uh, those people with, uh, verbal and communication disabilities. So instead of having to articulate something, they can point to a pictograph. And say, I want to go play or I, I'd like to go to lunch or whatever it might be to help them feel free to communicate their needs. Um, and not stymied by the disability that, that, that they have now. Um, we should consider, and I, I took a lesson from that, uh, I was talking to someone who told me about that program. We should have, it doesn't have to be an electronic board, it can just be as simple as a, uh, pictorial representation of services you need in town hall. I'm looking for the planning department, I want to talk to someone about taxes, whatever it might be. As a methodology of understanding and broadening the opportunity for people. But also having town hall representatives understand various disabilities may. Preclude or seem daunting to people who need us, need town services, just as I need town services.
Absolutely. I mean, if we look at that too, from just like the town itself, which we were kind of starting to breach at this point was like. What, what would kind of be like a, a good way for us to kind of like connect with members of the town to create that, that opportunity for education? Like, would it be some kind of downtown block party that's kind of centered around disability education? Or I don't know, what do you kind of see?
I think it's a, I think it's a incremental and small ripples that will build waves. Um, it may be as pairing with Falcon Fest. Now, I used to be a, uh, I was a longtime member of Davis Family Festival. And maybe at Endicott Park Day, having the opportunity to, um, you know, to, to bring together people with disabilities who are willing to, you know. And having the children come and talk and engage and maybe it's just a discussion about, you know. They're gonna ask, why are you in that chair? You know, how do you get around? And just the opportunity to discuss that, you know, your life while different is still normal. Uh, you still get up and, you know, eat and drink and, and, and educate yourself and do whatever, and normal people do, just with different methodologies. And it may be small pockets of discussion, we may be bringing it to, you know, I would suggest we. You consider, you know, some of the other social and, and social civic and, and religious organizations that have, uh, programs. Um, so it may be, you know, pairing with Falcon Fest, pairing with Davis Cares, pairing with other groups and organizations. To bring the message that, you know, uh, dispels, uh, misinformation.
That's great. I mean, just getting into kind of a more specific example, like say. You know, say we want to do a, like a downtown festival where, you know, we're promoting accessibility and disability and just education in that way. You know, how would, how would we go about kind of securing that space and making sure everything's all good? Would that be something that would go through the Select Board?
Well, I think with a Select Board liaison, that's exactly part of the, the, uh, part of the, the benefit that liaison brings to the board. Yes, we would talk to our community planner, we would talk to the. our community planner, we would talk to the police and the fire department and say, we'd like to block this section of the square off on this date. Ask about all of the issues that we would need to deal with. Um, when I was in Family Festival, we did that for all of the events, uh, whether it be the fireworks or, or downtown oldies night, you know, so we would have to make sure that, you know, in, in that we, we had the appropriate facilities, uh, uh, porta potties, including handicap accessible porta potties, things of that nature. There are a lot of, there's a ton of logistical issues with running, uh, any kind of education program. And I think that that's where a liaison would be able to clear the path. It would seem less daunting to the people who are trying to organize if they knew someone who had done the organization or could guide them to the organization as opposed to all self-discovery.
Yeah. I mean, you don't need to reinvent the wheel when you have a liaison that has a template for you. So,
Yep.
you know, why not save us the time and kind of move forward? So I think.
It shouldn't, it shouldn't be about, um, where are people going to park? It should be about what's the message we're bringing.
I mean, that's what's really important anyway. I mean, it's not, it's not necessarily the logistics. It's what's at the heart of what we're trying to, you know, celebrate with these kinds of events. On, on that note, um, is there kind of anything else that you wanted to share with us today regarding accessibility or regarding, uh, your select board, um, running or anything like that?
Well, you asked some really thoughtful questions and I, I really do want to thank you for, for giving me some broad themes to look into, to reflect on, to think about. And I think I started an education path that I, I hadn't necessarily been on prior to, to our discussion. I mean, you asked about ways that maybe we can, uh, we can, uh, improve opportunities for employment or, or collaboration. Uh, for example, Danvers is the host community for one of the state's oldest regional training programs. The Northeast Ark is right here in town. There is no reason we shouldn't, uh, offer opportunities in our park programs and, in our recreation programs, in, in town hall and our planning that takes, uh, you know, ta- takes, um, advantage of their specialized skills. Um, and, and again, um, try to have the exposure that dispels the myths um, and makes people comfortable, uh, you know, around each other. Um, and it's not, I need to feel comfortable about, with someone with a disability, but also that they feel comfortable that they're in a safe space, that they are, um, welcomed and, and, and embraced. I think that, um, part of this show, this very show, because I went back and watched the others, is providing information for people to understand. And I think we need to do a better job at communicating what's being done on, on behalf and embracing um, the knowledge and the insight that I don't have. There are things I just do not see when I see, when I look at a building, I see certain things and that's my focus. If, you know, um, uh, when I look at an event where it's being planned, I, I may not immediately come to mind certain things that I don't, that I don't experience in my life at this time. So.
Yeah. And I would, and you can't hold it against someone for that, because it's really about personal experience. And if we can kind of distill down a lot of our, our points here, it's like, it's really just about connection and communication. And the fact that we all need to be comfortable serving as an educator at some point. And knowing that we don't know everything. We, you know, everybody's individual. It's not someone's disabled or someone's not disabled. Everybody's who dis- who is disabled is completely different from each other.
Correct.
So it's not even necessarily about accessibility for a disabled population, but just accessibility for people in general.
I guess as a closing comment, I'd say that when elected to this like board, I will continue my lifelong passion of, of seeking a community that's embracing of everyone, that, that, that i- i- it's about equality. Whether it be, uh, 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 addressing disability, access, accessibility issues, whether it be about someone's lifestyle. People should feel safe in our town. People should feel comfortable in our town. People should not feel like they're outside the community looking in, but should be embraced as part of the fabric of this town, part of that community. No, equal, uh, equal access, equal, um, participation. And they shouldn't have to have any fear of reprisal or recrimination for being the people they are. So, yeah. Um, I, I look forward to continuing that. By embracing accessibility, by, by, by embracing equality, we strengthen the fabric of the town. We make it a better community for everybody.
Yeah. I mean, you should love where you live, right?
Right. And, you know, it's, 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 often it's, it's easy to say, I love my town. My, one of the things on my signs is I love our town. It's not my town.
Yeah.
It's a town that I am a participant in. I do this work because I want my town to be better.
We build and grow as a community, right?
And I think I bring skillsets that help that, you know, there are architects who do certain things. There are builders or plumbers or whatever skillset you may bring to the table. I think that, um, leadership is one of the things I bring to the table.
That's great. So with that in mind, when are, when will people have an opportunity to vote for you?
Sure. The election is on May sixth, uh, early election. There is a early election day at town hall on a Saturday. If, uh, May sixth is not convenient for people. There's also the opportunity to contact the town clerk and ask for a mail-in ballot. Last year, uh, when we have a state ballot, uh, they, they send out, uh, they send out those cards for requests. Now, at this point, you have to actually contact the town clerk, ask for mail-in ballot. If you think he might be away, if you think your, uh, children who are in college, uh, would want to participate in voting, they can do it that way. So May sixth is the, is the day that most people think about is election day, but there's many opportunities ahead of that.
That's great. Well, on that note, thank you so much for joining me today on the show.
Oh, I've thoroughly enjoyed it. I thank you for the opportunity. We kind of, um, just went free form and I've really enjoyed that.
Nice. Awesome. Well, thank you, everybody. This has been another episode of Seen and Heard. We will see you on the next one.